Let's call this meeting to order. This is a meeting of the Auburn School Committee. We are still working remotely here, so bear with us as always if there are any issues. We do not have any special recognitions this evening, correct Dr. Burnell?
That is correct.
Then I would seek approval of the minutes of our last meeting.
Dr. Kaufman will make that motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it. Gail.
Roll call vote. Dr. McCrillis?
Yes.
Mrs. Kaufman?
Yes.
Mrs. Holloway?
Yes.
Mrs. Harrington?
Yes.
Mr. Scobie, yes, it is a vote. Dr. Burnell, did you want me to do a roll call of everyone that's in attendance at the meeting?
I think that would be helpful for Mrs. Otten, who's taking minutes, yes.
Okay, well, let's do that then. Does that include Chris Hugo?
Yes, because he is recording and I think probably.
Chris Hugo is here, recording. Dr. McCrillis?
Here.
Mrs. Kaufman?
Here.
Holloway?
Here.
Mrs. Harrington?
Here.
Mr. Scobie, here. Dr. Burnell?
Yes, here.
Dr. Chamberling?
Yes, here.
Where's Becky?
She's on. She just said here, yeah.
Muted.
And Mrs. Otten? And I believe...
Cecilia's here.
I'm here. I'm here.
All right, excellent.
We do, Mr. Chair, have another guest here. I don't know if you want him or her to identify himself or not. I can just see it on the screen.
I think that's, I think that may be Cecilia's other connection.
Oh, okay. Good enough.
Is that right, Cecilia?
I don't believe, I thought I only, I haven't signed on on my computer. I'm just on my phone.
What are the last two digits of your phone, Cecilia? The last two?
Five, one, seven, nine.
Okay, so it's someone different.
It's someone different. Someone different, would you like to identify yourself? Okay, hearing nothing, we'll move forward and hope for the best.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I wanted to just update you regarding the Meals to Go program. As we've shared with you at most of our recent meetings, the program continues to be a tremendous success, feeding over 200 children on a daily basis, both for breakfast and lunch, and those meals go from Monday through Friday. But Mrs. King did recently make us aware that in, she had stopped into Domino's in the Park and Shop Plaza, and they have, they agreed to donate 30 cheese pizzas along with their famous garlic cheese crust in the meals to go program. So those went on the, went in the boxes just this past Wednesday, and the value of that donation is $417. And she did provide a letter of thanks to them. Also wanted you to let you know that she is working on a community bishop at Domino's for the coming school year. Just really wanted to give her credit and thanks for her advocacy of the Meals to Go program, her staff, as well as the needs of all of our children. So it is my recommendation that you accept it with gratitude.
I would entertain that motion.
I'll make that motion to accept the donation of 30 cheese pizzas, a value of $417, to the Auburn Meals to Go program from Domino's Pizza in Auburn. That's just a wonderful thing for them to have done. Thank you.
Do I have a second?
Second, Doc.
Any other comments?
That's great.
Through the chair, just thank you. I know they're working really hard already, so I think it's just really impressive that they're still going the extra mile. So thank you.
Much appreciated. Roll call vote. Dr. McCrillis?
Yes.
Mrs. Kaufman?
Yes.
Mrs. Holloway?
Yes.
Mrs. Harrington?
Yes.
And Mr. Scobie, yes, it is a vote.
Great, thank you. The next item, you had asked for me to review with Mrs. Morris, Becky, the fund balances in the revolving accounts, namely for the satellite, asteroids, galaxy, and little rockets programs. So I am happy to report that there are ample funds in those accounts. So I do recommend that you continue to pay those individuals. I'll bring back to you an additional recommendation. So in the time since we first had approved this, it has come to my attention that in order by state law for someone to be paid a wage, they have to actually do work in order to receive payment. So we, in working with, and I think I reported this last week, with the town on a couple of projects, those individuals, and particularly those who provide before or after school care for our children, the children not being in school really makes it impossible. But they are assisting with the seniors project of calling seniors to see if they have any needs, medical, food-wise or otherwise, and just checking in on them on a weekly basis. So I really appreciate these individuals from these, who serve in these programs for doing that. And it is therefore my recommendation that we continue to pay them. And there is a recommended motion, a rather long one there, that you could just say so moved, if Mr. Chair is agreeable to that.
I would agree with that, so I would entertain that motion.
Megan McCrillis, I'll make that motion as moved.
Do I have a second?
Yeah, Holloway will second that. Has movement?
Any comments, questions?
I also know through the chair that some of the teachers in the satellite program are going into a lot of Zoom classes that aren't, you know, they're assigned class just to see the satellite kids. And I think it's, you know, really a testament to how involved they are with their, with the kids. So I think that's great.
Thank you.
That is great. Any other comments? All in favor? Dr. McCrillis?
Yes.
Mrs. Kaufman?
Yes.
Mrs. Holloway?
Yes.
Mrs. Harrington?
Yes.
And Mr. Scobie, yes, that is a vote. Thank you. And we now move on to teaching and learning. Is that all you have, Dr. Burnell?
It is, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Dr. Chamberling?
Yes, thank you. So I'm excited to talk to you tonight about the efforts that have been made to provide our students with remote learning experiences since our school closure, which the last time we were in school together was back on March 12th, which is hard to believe. Since then, with tremendous support from principals and teachers and support staff, we have followed his initial recommendations based, given back to us on March 26th, which really outlined what a remote learning experience was and how it was intended to encompass a wide range of learning experiences for our students that could take place in a really hands-on way in our students' homes since we're out of school. We, again, I can't share enough how tremendous the teach, the work they've done around designing, first of all, collaborating with one another so that students in each grade level and content area are getting similar experiences, as well as the dedication they've had in providing live learning experiences and interactions with kids, which has really been terrific. We expected early on this past Friday additional guidance in light of the news we received that we will not be returning to our classrooms for the remainder of this school year. And thus Commissioner O'Reilly has indicated that the environment will change a bit and the expectations will change a bit. But prior to getting that, we wanted to know from families how the experience had been for them thus far with what we had provided. So I give you some very simple data that was collected from the surveys that families completed. And it was just to get a sense of how things were going. And so we had 851 families across the district who responded. Eighty-three percent of the respondents said that it was working pretty well for their kids, given that we were only a couple of weeks into it. Seventy-two percent of respondents noted that students were consistently completing two to three hours of work each day. The initial guidance from Commissioner O'Reilly was to us to provide approximately half the school day. So given that we were still pretty new at it, we were doing a nice job with that. And there were a small number of families, based on our overall population, that indicated that they could still use some hands-on supplies to make things accessible to their kids, paper, crayons, pencils, those kind of things. And so we're working to get those materials to the families who indicated that. Since I wrote this, late Friday evening, we did receive additional guidance from Commissioner O'Reilly, which outlines some power standards for each grade level and content area that he would like us to focus our efforts on. They are primarily those foundational standards for each area that students really need to be successful as they transition to the next grade level. And so those will be, we just had our first leadership meeting about them this morning. We'll be having additional meetings with grade level leaders and classroom teachers about what those standards are and how we can best provide that instruction and those experiences to our students by focusing in these areas. So we're excited, you know, Commissioner O'Reilly continues to place heavy emphasis on the social and emotional well-being of our students, even while we begin to place a more targeted emphasis on standards-based learning and teaching in this remote environment. But what he emphasized throughout the document he shared with us is that we just need to make sure everyone is well. And beyond that, what we can provide around teaching and learning is going to help set our kids up for success later on. So again, we're at the beginning stages of this, but if it's any evidence of how our staff has stepped up from the start of this remote learning environment, I have every doubt. And quite frankly, many of the things he recommended, we're already doing. We are already having live experiences with kids. We are already providing feedback on work. We are already, you know, having that, that kind of project-based approach to some of the learning. So many of the things he's recommending, you know, he wants every student to have someone reaching out to them. We already have that in the works with our support staff. So we are very well positioned to take this next step in the remote learning environment. And certainly, as we progress, I would be happy to share out how that goes along once we hammer out more of the details. But if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those.
I have one question. Do we have enough supplies for the children that are lacking the paper and crayons? Or are we looking for donations?
No, we have plenty of supplies. I think particularly since we've been out of school, there are many things that would typically have been being used in school that haven't been. So at this point, I think we're very well apportioned for that, thankfully to all your support. So I think we're in good shape.
Good.
Through the chair, is the new recommendations up on the DUCY website?
It was not, he sent it out via email, and it did say it would be posted. Whether or not it's currently posted, I didn't go and look because I had it via email. But he's been pretty clear about it, but so it probably is.
Okay.
Any other comments? Kaufman?
Oh, thank you. So I do have just a couple of questions. So one, I guess, concern that I received from some parents was more just curiosity about whether or not a child can actually fail out of a grade in this time period. And this is, you know, I understand that, you know, we're learning as we go. I think this was coming from families that don't have a lot of time to spend hands-on time because they are still in the workforce. So they were concerned that, because they don't have time to sit down with their child, that they're just not on, they're not feeling on top of everything as much as they can be. So I don't want to encourage, you know, free-for-all, but has there been any guidance from DUCY so far as how we assess that? Or are they still working on that?
Well, as you know, all the, this is all being done in a credit, no-credit environment. We're not providing formal assessments per se, like a kind of exam or test, if you will. We're not providing that route because we are also grounded in the idea of equity, which you just spoke to, right? There are some kids who have varying levels of access to things, as well as the support at home. But what is made clear is that if students are giving their best effort and some of, some of getting some kids to provide their best effort falls on us to really create that relationship and that outreach and those avenues and different modalities for kids to show what they know, we feel like we can, we can get kids to a point that they've all engaged enough that we can't, and we're going to have to change what we do come the fall, right? So we're not going to be starting up fourth grade like we started up fourth grade last year because all kids are going to need some more intervention to get ready, right? And we know that's, that's going to be the next step we're going to start to talk about is how do we start the coming year? And I think the guidance with these standards helped to provide us with some direction as to where we're going to need to start next year. So even today, I spoke with principals about that gentle supportive outreach to any family who isn't participating. Why aren't they participating in the sense of how can we help? How can we make assignments more accessible, more feasible, more apt to be done, given the environment that you're working at home? Because we do have families where both parents are working, still working full-time, are, you know, in that kind of healthcare or whatever situation. But they're providing a lot of work to the community, so they can't provide a lot of support at home. So we've talked about, this is really from a supportive point, and we're going to find a way to make this work and this instruction accessible to everyone. Does that make sense?
No, absolutely, it absolutely does. And then I guess my other question, and I know this is a little bit ahead of the game as well, was they said of some concerns that parents have that we have so, so quickly put the brakes on that their children already, even just looking over the summer, that they don't feel equipped to get their kids ready to jump back into the same level of rigor that we had, even just this past year. So, you know, the thought of having a kid change from seven classes, even in a day, on my first day of middle school, I just say that because of middle school, but, you know, it seems daunting because they went from full speed to zero. So are we giving any thought to that? Or, you know, can I, I guess, a gentle re-entry into the fall? Might not be a good understanding.
Yeah, and it is, you know, there are a lot of dominos that have to fall into place before we get there. But there are already a lot of discussions about, again, focusing on that social and emotional piece. How kids ended the year? How do we start the year in a way that is supportive and understanding that they've gone through? This, this can be considered a traumatic event for, I think, for many of us. This has really upended our worlds in many ways. And so certainly, there are really preliminary but ongoing discussions about what's going to be the most supportive and effective ways for kids to re-enter this school environment that they've really, they were, you know, taken out of abruptly. They've now been immersed in this new experience, and now it's going to change again. And we know just any kind of transition can be hard for kids. So I promise you, there'll be a lot of thought going into that. We're taking, we're kind of trying to take one step at a time, always with a little bit of forethought about, hmm, what might this mean down the line? So, yeah, there'll be a lot more discussion around that. But certainly, we want to be gentle about how kids come back.
Okay, great, thank you. That's all I have. Thank you, Chair.
Good questions.
Through the chair, have we, how's our participation been? I heard from other districts that it's been slowly declining in some districts. How are we doing on participation?
Yeah, so that's not the impression I've gotten from our principals. They, you know, there are still some kids that we're finding our way to get to, and that's for a wide range of reasons. But it's a small number of kids. And typically, student participation has been really, really, they've been very pleased with it. So each school, right off the bat, did put some things into place to make sure that we were outreaching anyone who wasn't participating and trying to find ways to pull them in. And I know now that teachers are becoming more comfortable in this remote environment, they're doing a lot more small-group instruction, as well as in some cases, they're reaching out individually to students to provide them with the support they need. So all of those things, as we get more comfortable, are going to get better.
Great.
Great. Any other questions or comments?
It's going great for us. Harringtons are happy. They're angry.
Awesome. Listen, we're all learning new things, so.
Yeah.
I wouldn't say we're happy over here, but we're plugging along, so. We'll get it done. Dr. Burnell, is that all you had?
Dr. Chamberling, yes, I believe so.
Okay, we're all set. Thank you for that report. And we now move on to everyone's favorite time of the evening. Business community. Elliot?
Good evening, everyone. I just wanted to give you, in your packet was a memo regarding the Auburn Middle School and Auburn High School's solar rooftop units. And I wanted to give a brief update on that. Approximately two years ago, the district began requesting proposals for the installation of the rooftop solar arrays. And this was in an effort to be proactive in reducing our costs for electricity while also maintaining compliance with the town's green community designation, from which funding is, well, the town receives funding from the state annually. After the selection of a vendor, we had a very lengthy contract negotiation between the Auburn School Department, the Town of Auburn, legal counsel. And we received much guidance from the Massachusetts Department of Energy Resources. In August of 2019, which I'm happy to report, a contract was signed for the project. And in addition to, the town also signed two pilot agreements, which are payment in lieu of taxes with the vendor. It's our intention, as we carefully move forward with this project, to track our savings so that we can see what we saved to be able to reflect that in future budgets. Right now, we currently don't know the savings that we're going to be receiving, but we want to be able to track that and be able to use that to offset in future budgets. But it's not currently reflected in FY 2021 budget. The Auburn Middle School construction of the solar arrays on the rooftop began in January of 2020 and was completed in mid-February. National Grid installed the new meter, and we've begun generating solar energy over at the middle school. The high school project began in mid-February and ended right around the end of March, beginning of April. We were currently waiting for National Grid to install a new meter at the high school, but I just heard over the past weekend that we did get that installed as of Friday. So I know Mr. Fahy's working with Alden Young, the construction director from Ace Solar, to get that, to get that up and running, having that process happen. There's a few punchless items that continue to need, to need to be addressed at the school sites. One of the things is that we're going to be having a kiosk at each of the schools that will monitor the solar energy generated. It'll also offer an educational component to the curriculum at each of the schools, allowing the students to monitor the usage. So we think that's a great thing. So as we, just about everything's done, the final piece of it is that the sites will be inspected by the town building inspector to complete the process. And at that point, the town assessor will also be, or their department will also be inspecting the solar arrays as they will place a tax value on the solar panels. With the signed pilot agreements with Ace Solar, the town has currently received $10,000 for the negotiation process. And as the schools will begin benefiting from the solar energy produced, the savings on our electric bills, the town will also begin to benefit as they will collect an annual tax payment from Ace Solar for the lease of the roofs. Over the course of the 20-year period, it'll be roughly about $175,000 that they should end up earning from the lease. Once additional information is, is, once we have the actual costs and savings from the production, I'll be sure to follow up with the data. But I really, you know, since we don't have that data right now, I don't want to make any promises of what we will have and what we will save. But we will do, collect the data and bring that back to you at future meetings so that we can show the trends and how we're doing with that. It's been a long process. Mr. Fahy and I are happy that it's coming to an end. But we've been very happy to put in the time and the energy. The goal being to bring the savings to the district that can be funneled into the classrooms and, most importantly, to our students. The town's administration, you know, we're very thankful that they've been very helpful in their council. They've given a lot of support and guidance, so we're thankful for that as well. So we hopefully should be up and running 100% very soon. So, and that's my report on the solar. I did have...
If I may, Cecilia, Mr. Chair, this being 5:59, we're actually going to need to recess and go into the public hearing, so that starts at six. So I would recommend that we leave this meeting and then go into the other one because it's a new link that we shared with town meeting members. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
So while we're waiting for Mrs. Scobie to communicate, I just want to thank the many town meeting members who have joined this meeting remotely. This has been an experience for us. I think I speak for all of us in doing these remote meetings. But they're working pretty well. So thanks so much for giving your time to be here, as well as the leadership team members as well. Mr. Scobie, would you like me, Mr. Chair, just to begin? Or do you want to, how would you like me to start?
Yes, feel free to begin. If everyone's on, I can't see anything except for you, so.
Okay. So thank you, everyone, for the opportunity and for being here in attendance for the public hearing, for the FY 21 budget for the Auburn Public Schools. I did, as you know, share my public hearing PowerPoint presentation with all of you prior to this meeting. So I'm not going to go through and read it, but I would like to just highlight a few points. I would also share for those in the listening audience who may not be on this call, this will be posted tomorrow to the website of the Auburn Public Schools within the business section under FY 21 budget. But overall, the request for this budget is $27,676,055. And I do want to share that this budget was started months and months ago, long before any of us could probably have even thought that we would be in the position that we are with a pandemic out there, with students doing remote learning and with, and with teachers teaching remotely. So we are where we are. And certainly, one of the quotes that I have at the very beginning of the presentation speaks to that issue. So when you can't control what's happening, challenge yourself to control the way you respond to what's happening. That's where the power is. And although that author is unknown, it seems those words are very wise, particularly given our current circumstances. So there are several things that we don't know. We don't know what impact this pandemic is going to have on state and local revenues. But what we do know is that it is our obligation as a school district to provide the best education we can for our students, not only this year doing so remotely, but when they return to the classroom next year. And obviously, there are going to be things that are going to need to be considered very carefully. But having quality staff in front of them is what this budget prioritizes. And should changes need to be made or considered, those will certainly come in the future. And that's with the understanding from town manager Jacobson and CFO Kazanov, who are in regular and ongoing communication with them. As noted in this budget, it reflects no increases in staff. The priority of the school committee and leadership team is to have appropriate class sizes, certainly to be below 20 at the elementary level. And I'm pleased to say that this budget supports those levels. It also, the original revenue that came out of the state house from the governor reflected an increase of about, just shy of $420,000. And some of that included monies for the Student Opportunity Act, which was supported in very large part by the legislature. Now, those monies, unfortunately, may be in flux due to the economic impact. This is having on us, but that is not yet known. At this point, and I did check with the town manager and CFO earlier today, the intention right now is to have a town meeting on June 2nd that may need to be changed or not. But even after that, it is very likely that there may need to be some reconsideration of the budget once the legislature comes out with their numbers. They are working diligently to do so, but in all likelihood, it could very well be into late June or even July until they have the full breadth and understanding of the impact of this program. So you'll, when we go through tonight, and again, this is due to the remote way that we are doing this, each administrator is going to read aloud his or her total budget request. If anyone has a question within that, after each person goes, and Mr. Handfield is the first one, I will ask if there are any... I will ask if there are any questions on the Auburn High budget. If there is, if this is okay with you, Mr. Chair, they can certainly just ask it, and we will do our best to answer, and then move on, um, to the next, um, category or department. Um, what I can share with all of you is that, um, a tremendous amount of work into the development of this budget, it really prioritizes student safety, student achievement, class size, technology, textbooks, professional development, and strategic plan implementation. And those have been, um, priorities that we've had, quite honestly, for a number of years. And I'm pleased to say that this budget reflects that. But most importantly, what it really reflects is students and our obligation to provide a well-rounded, comprehensive program that allows them, not only during each grade level that they attend, but when they leave our schools, to be able to embrace any and every opportunity that comes their way. So with your permission, uh, Mr. Chair, what I'd like to do is, um, turn it over to Mr. Handfield for him to read aloud, he'll introduce himself, announce his school and the total budget request, and then we can see if there are any questions for him.
Yes, please do.
Okay, Mr. Handfield, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Casey Handfield, Principal of Auburn High School. Total budget request for Auburn High School is $6,994,521.50.
Are there any questions regarding the Auburn High School budget request? Okay, seeing none, I will go, and if anyone does, please just speak up. I'll go over it now and turn it over to Mr. Desto.
Good evening, everybody. Hope everybody's doing well. I'm Greg Desto, the principal of Auburn Middle School, and the total budget request for Auburn Middle School is $5,185,893.45.
Any questions regarding the Auburn Middle School budget request? Okay, seeing none, I'll turn it over to Mrs. Stanek, please.
Good evening. This is Jennifer Stanek, Principal of Paketog Elementary School. The total budget for Paketog Elementary School is $2,177,518.38.
Are there any questions for Mrs. Stanek regarding the Paketog budget? Hearing none, I'll turn it over to Mrs. Mahan, please. Oh, you're muted.
Sorry. Good evening. This is Marie McGann, Principal of Bryn Mawr Elementary School. Total budget for Bryn Mawr Elementary School is $2,771,399.96.
Any questions regarding the Bryn Mawr School? Okay, we will move on to Dr. Lopez.
Had trouble with the mic there. Good evening, everyone. This is Susan Lopez, the principal of the Swanson Road Intermediate School. The total budget request for Swanson Road is $4,624,909.83.
Any question regarding the Swanson Road budget? Hearing none, I'll turn it back over to Mr. Handfield regarding the athletic and fine arts budget.
Good evening, everyone. Casey Handfield, Principal of Auburn High School. Total budget for Auburn Athletics and Fine Arts is $533,115.55.
Any questions regarding those two budget areas? Hearing none, I will turn it over to Mrs. Worsbicky, Business Manager.
Good morning. I mean, good morning. Good evening, everyone, I'm sorry. Uh, Cecilia Worsbicky, Business Manager. Um, total budget for the central administration, which includes the superintendent's budget, the assistant superintendent's budget, the business and finance budget, the technology budget, the English language learner budget, and health services budget, is $3,130,317.2.
Any questions regarding the central administration budget? Hearing none, I'll turn it over to Mr. Fahy, Director of Facilities.
Thank you, Dr. Brunel. Good evening, everybody. This is Joseph Fahy, Director of Facilities. The, uh, operating budget is $275,240. Thank you.
Any questions regarding the facility maintenance budget? Okay, hearing none, I will turn it over to Mrs. Reedy, our Department of Pupils Services.
Good evening, everyone. Rosemary Reedy, Pupils Services Director for the Auburn Schools. The total budget for the Pupils Services Department is $1,983,229.31.
Any questions regarding the pupil personnel budget? Hearing none, I will turn it over to Dr. Chamberlain.
Thank you, Dr. Brunel. Um, I'm Beth Chamberlain, the Assistant Superintendent for the Auburn Public Schools. Our total FY 21 budget request for the Auburn Public Schools is $26, 27,676,055, which represents an overall increase of 2.75% from the FY 20 approved budget amount. Thank you.
So hearing no questions, um, this does officially close the, um, public hearing, and I would ask for, uh, Mr. Chair, if the school committee could take a vote in support of that number for the record?
I would entertain that motion.
Uh, Megan McCrelis, I will make that motion to approve the budget.
Do I have a second?
Second?
Any discussion? Seeing none.
Uh, Mrs. Harrington may have one, just on mute.
Sorry, yeah, I'm on mute. Um, where does the preschool budget fall in under all that?
So typically, the preschool budget has, in the past, been, um, separated into the Paketog budget. There are a couple of classrooms there, and at the Bryn Mawr budget, because there are three classrooms there. I would anticipate going forward, though, uh, whether it, uh, would likely, I would recommend, and this will be a decision, um, for others to make, perhaps have its own section, because as, uh, previously voted, Dr. Chamberlain will serve as the principal of the, um, of those preschool classrooms. So that would make sense to me to do it that way.
Okay, that's what I was wondering. All right, thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Seeing none. Roll call vote, Dr. McCrelis?
Yes.
Ms. Kaufman?
Yeah.
Ms. Holloway?
Yes.
Ms. Harrington?
Yes.
And Mr. Scobie, yes, it is a vote. Thank you.
Thank you, and I do just want to thank, um, not only leadership for your tremendous work. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mary Ellen.
Yes, thank you.
And thank you, town meeting members, for your support, too.
You're welcome.
Thank you, thank you, Dr. Brunel.
Thank you, Dr. Brunel. You've been wonderful.
Thanks.
If that's all.
So this does actually conclude our public hearing. Um, since we recessed the other meeting, we will need to go back into that, because we did have a guest, if you recall, in that meeting, so we should go to that meeting to finish the school committee. So thanks so much, everybody. So, we'll resume the meeting then, Mrs. Harrington, if you want.
Yes.
So I think Mrs. Worsbicky had, um, some additional, uh, one additional item to share.
Right. Um, I just wanted to, um, as approved at a previous meeting, I've been working with a group of 13 districts in an attempt to negotiate a discount for busing, um, in order to help save the district some money, while also keeping the vendor viable, available to perform our contract when the school resumes. Um, we're in the process of finalizing an amendment to our current contract. Um, the negotiation will provide a savings to the district, and I'd like to request at this time, um, your approval to move forward, having Dr. Brunel sign on behalf of the Auburn Public Schools once the final amendment has been agreed to with the, um, vendor and the cohort of the AA transportation districts. Um, I will be happy to bring back the final agreement with this savings or report at a future meeting as well, but I wanted to be able to get that, have her be able to sign so that we could get that taken care of and move on from there. So I guess I would ask for, entertain a motion for your approval.
Okay, can I get a motion for that approval? I don't have that in front of me, so I don't know.
I'll make that motion.
Yeah, Kaufman, I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All right, all those in favor, um, roll call vote, uh, Dr. McCrelis?
Yes.
Dorothy Kaufman?
Yes.
Gail Holloway?
Whoa.
Gail Holloway? Yes? And Jesse Harrington?
Where's George?
Failed.
He's having technical difficulties.
Yeah.
Okay, well, thank you for that vote. Um, I will be sure to bring back the agreement and, um, report at a future meeting on that, so thank you. Um, one last thing I just wanted to add as well was that I would, um, wanted to let you know that we spoke about the busing applications, and, um, Mr. Fahy was gracious enough to put up a mailbox out front of 5 West Street. There's a black mailbox now that will be able to accept busing applications, and if people wanted to drop off, you know, a check with their application, they could do so. So that will be at the front of the building, so just want to make people aware. And just a reminder that everyone should register still for busing by June 1st to avoid the, um, the charge. So thank you. And that's all for my report.
That was a good idea, because that's what they're doing up at the town hall. You can go bring your things up there and put them in a box. The only other item, um, Madam Chair, is in updated job description for the IAs and ABAs. As some of you may remember, uh, this was updated originally back in 2011 and then again in 2016. So we did want to do, uh, another update on it, and it is my recommendation that you approve it as.
Okay, can I get a motion?
Uh, Megan McCrelis, I'll make that to approve as written.
Doc Kaufman, second?
Okay, all those in favor, Dr. McCrelis?
Yes.
Doc Kaufman?
Yes.
And Gail Holloway?
Yes.
And Jesse Harrington, yes?
That is all the business that we had this evening, Madam Chair, unless anyone had anything else.
I did have one question about that job description. Um, it says they have to be able to lift up to 100 pounds. Is that, are they thinking lift the students?
Um, through the chair, through the, the vice chair, yes. So some of the individuals who work particularly one-on-one, they could actually, and oftentimes, they would do it with the assistance of others, obviously, but may need to transport and move students, particularly those who may need some toileting assistance.
Oh, okay. Thank you. Um, now, through the chair, I know we already voted, but now that, uh, Mrs. Holloway said that, I'm just thinking from a medical perspective, so maybe that's why, but 100 pounds lifting without assistance, is that safe? Or are they doing it without assistance? Should we?
Oh, no, it would be with assistance. It would be with assistance, yes.
Okay.
Yes, anytime that they would be doing, uh, hiccups, Mr. Scobie, um, that they would be doing that, that would be with assistance. It would be a team effort.
Okay, through team.
Okay, good. And really, um, through the chair, the, the change that we made in here, um, but for some minor semantics here and there that we changed, was really that any of the IAs or ABAs who work in the Rise, Evolve, or Encore program do need to be trained on driving the van, and that's because students go out to sites. So we would provide that training for them, um, and as noted in here, they would need to be trained within two months. Um, so that really is the, that really is a substantive change. The rest really was some semantics, um, from what was there in, in 2011 and 2016.
Question. Mary Ellen, does that mean they need a special driver's license, or it's considered a regular vehicle?
It is. So through, um, through the chair, it does not require a special license. We have a number of people across the district who have been trained. They have to do a, um, video component, and actually, AA has been very gracious in providing, um, practical training that they have to do. Mr. Fahy has gone out and done it. But a number of our coaches are trained for the smaller, um, athletic groups and a number of IAs and ABAs and teachers across the district, so it's, it's been great, and particularly for our students in these three programs that go out to job sites. It's invaluable to us, so great resource. Thank you. And that was all I had for this evening.
I'm through, Chair. I just had one question with, um, COVID happening and all that. Should we plan on meeting more over the summer, or is that something we'll do as needed? Um, I just see there being a need potentially for, you know, things that could evolve.
So through the chair, um, while, while I won't be here then, I, I would encourage you, and I think probably to at least tentatively plan for some more meetings, because, you know, what we are finding is a leadership team, but it is sometimes, quite honestly, on an hourly basis, that information is changing for us. And so everyone is, we are in contact absolutely every day with a Google Hangout or a Zoom, um, meeting. We do have a school committee meeting scheduled for a week from Wednesday on May 5th, um, or 6th, I suppose it must be the 6th, is our Wednesday night. Um, so we could certainly bring back a, if schedule, we could obviously run that by, um, Mr. Handfield and, and Dr. Chamberlain and others, who, um, would be a part of that, but some suggested ones, because typically, it's been in early July and then a very late August one. So I think in all likelihood, um, you know, and unless, unless or until we hear from the governor differently, they may continue, um, with this format, and, and by then, I would imagine you will all be expert at this.
That's a stretch.
I think, I agree with, uh, Meg. I think it's a wise move, because, you know, who knows what the summer will bring, but that's just my opinion.
It'd just be nice to have it on the schedule, um, in case, you know, there could be budgetary stock for the fall, or, I don't know, I've been reading a lot of stuff, so who knows, but hopefully not, but.
That's a comment. Better to have it and then be able to cancel it if we need to or want to.
Right, exactly.
Uh, Dr. McCrelis, as we were online, it, I got an email from the commissioner. It does appear that the remote guidance is out and, uh, posted on the website, so.
Oh, great, okay. Thank you.
And then I actually just have one more question, if it's all right, uh, Meg, unless you have any follow-up questions.
No, that was it.
Okay, um, so one other thing was brought up by a parent regarding children getting their belongings from the lockers, and I guess the concern was that ha- around how difficult it will be to actually keep kids apart, and also the additional burden it will place on our janitorial staff to have people in buildings versus having some people bring it outside in turn, you know, similar to the way we're doing a lot of drop-off activities, or having it be based on like a per request only. Um, I, I would imagine that you guys have a lot of thought, and maybe there's no, maybe we don't have an exact plan in place yet. I just saw the memo out, so I would be curious to hear your thoughts on that, or any ideas that you guys have about when we're gonna come up with a, an a- an actionable kind of plan for that.
Absolutely. So through the chair, and we were actually discussing it this morning as, as a leadership team, and we talked about it last week, anticipating the updated guidance coming from the commissioner, because we have staff that, um, need and want to get in whether to get some materials and certainly personal belongings. So, um, Dr. Chamberlain actually put together a survey that went out to staff just this past Friday, and people were very quick to respond, and we gave them multiple different times, in times of the day, in days of the week, even when they can respond. So now, with that information in hand from this morning, principals are looking at that to try to create a schedule that maintains all of the guidelines. So, um, keeping people, you know, in, um, we need to finalize it tomorrow. Dr. Chamberlain put together, you know, our protocols and expectations when they come in, and people need to stay, you know, only in the.
And people need to stay, you know, only in their own classrooms and entering and exiting the building from different doorways and things. And that principals will assign people so that they're in different parts of the building to stay below the 10. We're going to expect people to come in with masks and things, and we'll have some gloves available for them. So that's all in process. And our plan was to roll that out so that staff would go in first. And ideally, what staff will do, particularly at the elementary level, will look to get things out of students' desks. And working with Mr. Fahey and the custodial team will bag them with students' names on them and then bring them down. And likely, the way we've distributed instruments a couple of times is set something up right outside. And as families come, much like the meals to go, they would collect it from there. So we are talking about, it's a little bit more challenging at the secondary level with the number of students and lockers and such. But our intention is to create a plan and roll that out. So ideally, if we can get staff in and out within, you know, by hopefully the end of next week or so, we'll be able to look towards the student plan shortly thereafter.
Okay, great. Thank you. No, that, that all sounds good because I know there will probably be a mixed response in terms of how comfortable people feel either going into the building or maybe their kid didn't have anything to pick up and maybe they don't, or just an instrument or, you know. So I think it will be prudent just to make sure that we, as accommodating as it can be to people's level of comfort. So, but I'm, I'm sure you guys are on top of it. It sounds like you certainly are, so.
We're trying, but thank you, yes.
I have.
Oh, sorry.
It's okay. One additional question before we adjourn. Last time we met, we voted to close the school yards. Are we posting up additional signs or?
So through the chair, yeah. The notification that went out to families last week, last Wednesday, went out to all via email. I posted it on the Facebook page. And that very next day, laminated copies were given. Mr. Fahey actually brought them to all of the field locations and locked them and posted them there as well. So my understanding was, I think it was Saturday, he had a nice day, that there were a couple of individuals there, but by and large, people were adhering to it. And we are looking to come up with a plan to use some of our staff, some of the ones who may not have enough work to keep them at their full capacity, that we may be able to place them at the field. And that way, they could make an announcement. And if people come, if the police need to be called, they can. And that way, it would not be costing the district any additional monies at all.
So. Can I can, if I could continue? So if we're seeing people on the high school field, those fields are locked and somehow they've got in?
Correct. So, yes, so through what had been reported to me, so not this past week and the weekend before, when, when some of you had outreach me, the initial evening, and it may have been a Thursday evening, not every area was locked. But since then, everything has been locked. So, and even that, that first weekend, it was locked. And people were jumping the fence, unfortunately. But I think by and large, people have, have heard the message and are heeding it. But I think it's going to take continued vigilance on our part, particularly if we're fortunate enough to string a couple of nice days together. This rain is keeping people away anyway, but, but that's, it's got to change eventually. So we're going to have to really stay on top of that.
So I went by last Saturday, and I did see people on the track and so forth. Not a lot, but some. So that meant they must have jumped the fence.
Correct.
My understanding is if we have signage that says no trespassing, the police are then able to do something about it.
Absolutely. And I would encourage anyone who sees anyone on our fields, if, because everyone has been warned, they absolutely can, call the police because it is trespassing.
Okay.
And then I have, actually have one follow-up question to Gail's comment. So from a liability standpoint, if we have signs up and someone tries to jump the very tall fences around the softball field or something like that, is the, the district held harmless? I'm just concerned about kids making poor decisions and where we stand from a liability position.
Well, I think, you know, we've certainly warned everyone and have made public announcements about it and been very clear. So I think, you know, we have provided ample notice to everyone. The issue, I think, though, comes down to when someone is, and hopefully it doesn't happen, does get hurt. People can always try to sue regardless of whether or not it would, would hold weight. But I would think we would be in a good position because we have notified and we've posted signs as well. The best position possible.
Thank you. And thanks for bringing that up, Gail.
Was the, was there anything else? Was Harrington, did you have something?
No, it was about the clearing out the lockers. I was gonna make a point that my daughter thinks this is an upcoming reunion. So I think a lot of her friends see it as an opportunity to all hug and embrace. So you might need to stress that point that it's not a reunion.
And through the. And even when we talked this morning, you know, with the leadership team, because, you know, we know our students are missing each other. We know our staff is missing each other. And, and everyone's staying connected remotely and things. But really to remind everybody that even though you've not maybe seen these people in person for five or six or more weeks, this is not the time to let our guards down. That you have got to come in, you've got to go right to your buildings. You know, you, you can't stop by the normal way of going in and stopping and visiting with the principal a little bit and filling him or her in and going through and talking with the secretary. It's really got to be come in for the sole purpose of getting new materials and gathering things and, and then to exit the building. So we're really going to need to be very vigilant in that. And everyone understands that, too.
Yeah, to Jesse's point, I think that was the concern, that especially if you kind of let kids loose and even if you tell them, they just might not make the best decision, so.
Right. It will be very.
It's hard.
Absolutely, absolutely. But we will create a very tight plan to try and avoid all of that, for sure. But all good points.
I do like the idea of having it brought outside, so less people in the building.
Right.
When at all possible. I'm sure it's harder with the older kids. And I'm sure there's some milk left in there from.
Is that all we have for this evening?
It is, Mr. Chair.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Doc Kaufman, I'll make that motion.
I'll second that motion.
Roll call vote, Dr. McCrillis?
Yes.
Mrs. Kaufman?
Yes.
Holloway?
Yes.
Mrs. Harrington?
Yes.
And Mr. Scobie, yes. It is a vote. Thank you and good night, everyone.
Good night, everybody.
Bye.
Bye, be well. Good to see you. Bye-bye.